All right, if everyone will stand please, we will open the meeting with a pledge of flag led by Commissioner Lowery and Mr. Smallwood say a prayer for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, you take care of us, you watch over us, you love us, and thank you for that. Ask them to give the city wisdom tonight, give them guidance. Just take care of our law enforcement, our first responders, all the military folks, and we'll just praise you for it, in Christ's name. Amen.
We call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Before we get started with the agenda, I'd like to make a comment. We have a familiar face sitting in the attorney chair tonight. Last Friday, our attorney, Adam Albritton, called me, talked about his desire to resign, and we both came to an agreement that he would think about it over the weekend, pray on it, and come make a decision one way or the other Monday. Yesterday, he called me yesterday morning, said he intended to resign to take care of his business in Panama City and work with his clients in Bay County. We got a letter to that effect yesterday afternoon, and so at this point, Mr. Gibson was gracious enough to just fill in for tonight, and if we need any legal advice, we have an attorney with us that's familiar with how we operate. So, Tom, we appreciate you doing that. And with that, we'll move on to the first item is a consent agenda, minutes of the regular meeting of November 19.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Second to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting, 11-19. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion passed for. Okay, building important. We won't have that this time. Long-term recovery. Ms. Nancy, I think is going to be here the next meeting. Nancy Stewart, PSJRA update.
No, not Nancy.
Okay, all right. Down where we have a city attorney gentleman, we've got to make a decision of what our plans are for a permanent city attorney. So, I'll open up for comments, suggestions, which way you guys want to go.
Mayor, I wonder, has staff reached out to anyone that may have interest? And then the second question would be, do we have to follow the procurement procedures for that in RFQ, RFP, whatever it may be, to make that happen, seeing as this is an emergency situation?
Yeah, I'll refer to our acting attorney.
Attorney services are not covered by any of the procurement, any of the state procurement rules and regulations. So, while if you felt like it was a good idea to go out for qualifications or proposals, it's not a requirement of state law.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So, what are our options, Mayor? Is it, would it be smart for us to maybe just pay us now, then go off to the process, and if the interim's interested, they can also apply? Or what do you recommend? I mean, this is your show, Mayor.
We could reach out to the, and you guys know I'm a local guy. I think we should have a local attorney. It's much easier on staff in that regard, and a little bit easier on us also. So, yeah, I'd like to reach out to someone local. I don't know if you guys want to let the city manager go with that, bring it back to us, or if anyone's got suggestions, or have talked to anybody that's interested. It just happened yesterday afternoon, and so frankly, I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk to anyone about, are you interested in this position?
I think Tom's doing a really good job tonight, so.
No, well, I take it back. I did take it back. I have reached out to Mr. Gibson, and he said he served with us for a long time, and did a wonderful job, and we did appreciate it. But he's, at this point in time, he's not interested in being back permanently.
That's the first thing I asked Jim this morning when I talked to him.
He'd probably stick around like two or three months, give us a little time.
I'd prefer to stick around for the evening.
Fair enough.
So, we've got to, we've got to do something. If you would like the city manager to canvass local attorneys, we can entertain a motion to allow him to canvass and come back to us. The option, we can go out for an RFQ, if we want to go out for an RFQ, if we write an RFQ for local attorneys, if we just, you know, stay local. So, we got two options.
Well, Mayor, I did, I did reach out to one of our former attorneys that did express an interest in it. I mean, and I think you all know, when we first brought him on board, I was more for the guy outside of town, and that didn't work out for us. And so, I think he did a great job for us, and I would love for that to be considered by this board and the service that he provided. I think Jim was happy with him. And so, if we could reach out to him and see if he's truly interested now that it's for real.
Okay. I don't have a problem. I mean, you go, it's pretty public record, and you're talking about.
Clint McKay.
Okay, okay. But you don't, I just think you need to reach out to him as well as others and see who's truly interested, because it ties you down. I mean, you.
Well, we're constrained. We already.
You've got to be here.
We voted on the budget already, Mayor, too, so we got to find someone willing to do it for what we've already put in our budget.
More or less.
More or less.
Less is more.
I think my question would probably be if we've got two or three that are interested, and we don't, we end up having to go out RFQ it or so. We need to think about that unless we just vote on.
Well, I think indirectly, what we're allowing him to do is kind of a quasi RFQ, isn't it? We find out who's interested, and then we negotiate with them as who do we decide we'd like him to negotiate with. So, I don't have a problem.
I'll make a motion to that effect. We allow staff to reach out to the local attorneys and make a recommendation back to the board as to what they have found, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Motion, there's a second.
Second, with a little bit of discussion. Can we have that information at the next meeting? I mean, we are going to need, I don't know if Tom's willing to come back again, but we do have one more meeting in December. Can we close this thing, next meeting?
I'd like to, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, two weeks.
What's our reason?
Second stand.
Second stand, okay. Any more discussion, discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries four of them.
We're getting work?
Yep, okay. All right, old business, Jim.
Yes, sir. The first item we have is the government complex grant. We've been working towards it. Mayor's had some good discussions. I will let him tell you some of the dues he has gotten back from some of the local developers, that we may have some leads on some options from the mayor.
Yeah, we, I had an excellent meeting with George Gonzalez, CEO of St. Go Company. He was gracious enough to come over and meet with Jim and I, and he knew before he came what we wanted, and he came with some options for us. Very, very nice, a couple pieces of property that he's, at this point in time, he said he had to get them appraised before he could, he knows how much money we have to spend, and so he's, of course, got to answer to stockholders. So, he's got to settle it at appraised or above appraised value. So, anyway, there's a couple of nice pieces. One's five acres, and one, they're two parcels together. They're like 5.6 acres, both great locations, and we're waiting on him to get back with us with our, with his, I guess you'd say, appraisals and options for us that will fit within the amount of money we have. But he was very, very nice, and so I think we're going to get a piece of property to build a new city home.
Good news. The next item we have is Capital City Bank lease. I did receive a call last week from Capital City Bank. Their intention is to sign the lease at the approved amount of $3,000 a month. Right now, what we're looking at is they want to get it built in less than a year. So, what they have right now, initially, we had a lengthier lease agreement on there up to 15 months. They've agreed to terms of nine months, month-to-month. So, right now, it's on their desk for signature, and from there, if they go beyond the nine months, they'll have to come back for the board on a month-to-month basis. But it is at the amount that you wanted, $3,000.
Will that begin November or December?
December 1. So, it's under the understanding, they know they have to pay us for the December month.
Okay. Now, that will impact our budget if they don't go to 12 months somewhat.
Heal the budget to 30, I believe, Mayor.
I think 36, I thought.
I believe, I believe it's only 30. I want to check.
Okay, good. Well, that's fine. Yeah, okay.
But it definitely gets us qualified.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good. Moving along.
The next item we have was Robert Schröder's order. We've been working over the course of a month or two, trying to look at what our options are. I think Mayor has some information that was provided down through former city attorney, gave you some ideas on some information. I think Mayor want to talk to you tonight about what he has.
Well, it's just Attorney Albritton put some things together. It's Robert Schröder's order, very complicated and lengthy, and tried to pare those down somewhat. We've got somewhat of a resolution in front of you. What I'd like you guys to do is take it home, study it, scratch out areas that you feel like are not important, and let's come up with something, a way, a formal way, that we'll run these meetings, so everybody will know upfront that we're, this is what we're going by. So, that's all I have on that. Jim?
Yes, sir. Moving along then, if we have another question on that. The last order of business under Old Business is RFP 2019-13, the Frank Payne Park gazebo. We went out for bids, and we did receive some bids, but they were potentially higher than what we have currently received from our insurers or from FEMA. Right now, what we, staff recommendation is we continue to look at it. Mike is actually working with FEMA to see if we can get a tape from them as to whether we will receive funding for it. I don't know that he's got a clear answer at this point in time on there, but.
FEMA has indicated that if the actual cost, if we submit actual invoices are over what they've calculated, they will up that number. But they also indicated that the process had to be within our purchasing policy and followed, and that the bids had to be reasonable. So, I sent the bids into FEMA, asking for their review to give us some indication, and they have not indicated back to us yet. We have a meeting with them Thursday. So, I don't know that we're going to be able to pin them to the table and say, they're going to say, yes, we will, we definitely honor that amount, but that's the indication they give. So, it's not quite clear to me yet. But again, we're meeting with them Thursday, and hopefully we can get some clarification from them on that. Or their engineers have had an opportunity to review those bids and qualify the low bid as reasonable for that repair.
For the, for the public, no, the low bidder for rebuilding the gazebo slash pier is $468,000. So, we respectfully decline to accept that. So, anyway.
Yeah, I realize it's an iconic figure in the city, and we want to continue looking at our options on there, but at this point, staff can't make a recommendation to you. Go ahead, spend $468,000 off.
How much didn't FEMA allow initially?
They're still calculating. They haven't finalized that number. The current number is 130K. So, but again, they are still, that has not been a finalized project on their list. They're still working.
Good. Continue to work. Very good. The next item we have is a reference to fair housing. Mr. Bruce Bousler's here tonight, and I believe at this point in time, Mayor, I think it will be appropriate to close out your current meeting and go to a public hearing.
Not so. Good news is that this isn't going to be a fair housing activity, but it doesn't need to be a CDPG update.
All right, very good.
Over the weekend, I began to have a nagging feeling that, you know, when we have an event for realtors and professionals, that we always do an advertisement. We haven't always done it for city commission meetings in the past. And I just wanted to check in with the DEO staff to ensure, and he said, well, if it's a published agenda instead of workshop, good. As it is, we advertise by online, and it doesn't say workshop, it says fair housing. To butt us a caution, I'd like to just do a short ad in the paper and have the workshop of fair housing in two weeks on the 17th. It still gets within this quarter, so we're good. But I have other news, in that the topic of coming up, where were we? Because they had expected us to put in an advertisement for contracting shortly after we got the release of funds in September, and been directed by the staff that, where the city's looking to marry that project with other funds from Triton to get that all finished in the months. And CEP said, well, if you do that, you can't use our money unless you go through an expanded environmental review, which would take about four months to complete and get approved with all the notice. So, what we should do immediately is send a letter to DEOs and get our intent to advertise immediately and go out for bid for destruction. We're getting pretty much behind the clock. Contract opened February 11th of last year. We need it finished by February 11th of 2021. So, pretty much need to start going out for bid, getting that contractor, getting whatever period of construction it is, and have time for closeout, punch list and all that before February 11th, 2021. So, that's pretty much where we are right now. And I have a letter draft to your signature that will inform the city or the DEO where we're at, because they're asking that question.
Right. So, are you going to do the advertising in the paper, or do you want staff to do it?
Usually the engineer does that, I believe, or I'm not sure who does that. I can put it in there. I just need the dates from the engineer on what are appropriate dates for the bid advertisement to be available, and then when he wants to have them open, we do the ad. So, we'll coordinate.
Okay, if you'll do that, that'd be great. Okay. All right. Any questions for Bruce? Appreciate you coming, always. See you doing. All right, good deal.
The next item we have, Mayor's a reference to our postage and mailing machine. We currently have a machine that's, the lease is expiring. It's under a state contract. If you turn over to page five and six, there's actually four today, a lease agreement. There is a typo that's in on page five that says 299 per month. It's supposed to correlate, but it's 458. I did get that corrected on one for our signature, if we decide to move forward on it. But what this is, this is for our machine that actually separates all of our, it's stuffed all of our envelopes and does our posties that we do for our utility bill. Currently, it is a little less. I think it's $370 a month currently we pay for basically the same machinery. In five years, it's gone up to 458, but it's a much-needed piece of equipment to get out of our utility bill. This would be for a 60-month rate. It's not 48, it's 60, and it's $458.
Questions or comments?
Is it in?
Yes, we currently pay for it. We already have an extended lease on there. It does go up a little bit, but we paid it last month, and we need to pay for it next month.
Is there a motion to approve this lease? Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook. Second. Second by Commissioner Lowery. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion passed for and over.
Frank Payne Park tennis court have noticed a road bump in the last couple of weeks. We do have the fence that has been reinstalled over at the park. We'll continue to look at what our options are. So, it's back there tonight. Commissioner Corr did have a meeting today. He didn't have a forum to get you a formal vote or anything from the parks committee that was set up by the board, but he did have some discussion with members on there, some different ideas for you. So, we'll continue to work on that. He actually had some quotes, too, to re-strike the tennis court slash possibly pickleball court. All those came under $10,000, so it looks like you could resurface it and re-stripe it for less than $10,000. But the bigger question is, we got to make some decisions on how you want it to be used to be. Do you want it to be pickleball? Do you want it to go at a tennis hybrid? Those kind of things. We need to work towards a goal as to how we want to look at it today.
Mike, you want to give us a little update on that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Before the holidays, I did email the members of the committee, and we weren't able to get a forum for a meeting today, but I did ask them to poll the community and send in emails or call me with indication. And we did have four members get together today to discuss the issue. And the general consensus from that discussion was that the recommendation to resurface the court and line it for both tennis and pickleball, and then move forward with establishing a permanent pickleball court at the facility as well. And so, that was the general consensus of the discussion, to re-line it as multi-use, but move forward with dedicating a specific court for pickleball.
Okay. Comments from here? I see quite a few folks from.
I have one.
Pickleball community, and there's probably some tennis folks out there, too, so I'd like to give them a chance to speak if they'd like to. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have one question that I had asked. I know that there was interest with the tennis players. I spoke to a few a week or so ago, and I know it wasn't all of them, but I did find out that the tennis players need lights, okay? And the two that played quite a bit of tennis said to me that they would be comfortable with going wherever they had a nice court if it was lit. So, I asked the question of Jim, we have some funding that's going to be left over in that grant for the trail lighting. So, the question to our engineer is, could we divert some of that funding to a different court? And the one that I was thinking about was the one that the school now owns, adjacent to the soccer fields. There's, I believe it's two tennis courts there. And before speaking to the school board, I wanted to note, is that an option?
Out of the trail grant?
Yeah. Because the trail goes right.
We'll certainly ask. We'll certainly ask.
We need to light that trail quite a bit.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. And I believe the trail actually splits there, comes back around both sides of the tennis court.
Yeah, let me ask.
Trail on both sides?
Yeah.
Where they took them.
So, and I wanted the tennis players and the pickleball players to know that we're looking at that option, and if the funding is available, my plan is to light and resurface partnership with the school board, have them maybe pay for the resurfacing, and we'll supply the lights off of the grant. And then we would have a place that would be strictly for tennis, and then we would have Frank Payne Park eventually go to pickleball. But that's just an idea, and then we can discuss if that's a good idea or a bad idea.
There you go. All right. Everyone like to speak? I see someone standing and ready to go. Please state your name and sign, sign in there, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Rod Regal. I'm the organizer for the Port St. Joe Pickleball Club. Now, that's normally like trying to herd a bunch of cats, but tonight, we speak with one voice. We have 71 members. They all want dedicated pickleball courts at Payne Park. Currently, we set up temporary nets every time we play. So, this means that only people who have nets and only in designated times can play. If we had permanent pickleball nets, then anybody could play at any time. And I predict that if we do that, the numbers of the court, it's skyrocketing. If we have permanent nets, we could also do leagues, clinics, exhibitions, maybe even small tournaments. Because pickleball is a social game, we need to have all the courts together. Some plans have not done that. They need to be together. Imagine then you wanted to throw a party, but you had to split the party between two houses on the opposite ends of a block. Your party's doomed before it even starts. So, that's why we want the courts together. It's a very social game. I'm also the local contact for the National Pickleball Association. I get numerous requests from people all over the country who want to come and play pickleball at Payne Park. In addition, every year, we get more members because they drive by as we're playing. They see us playing, they stop and play. That's what pickleball players do. They just hop out of the car and come play. So, that's why we think Payne Park is the ideal location for a permanent pickleball facility. Eight years ago, we started by drawing chalk outlines of our courts. Last year, less than two weeks after Hurricane Michael hit, we were out there shoveling sand and debris off the courts and erecting temporary fences at our own cost. We have, for eight years, demonstrated our commitment to our sport, to the city of Port St. Joe, and to Payne Park. At Payne Park, we already have parking, we already have restrooms, we already have a path and fence. It would be the most economical use of city resources to just put pickleball courts there. Now, in addition, causes the holiday season. It would be a great Christmas gift to all 71 members. You can stand up now, some of you, to establish a permanent pickleball facility at Payne Park. And rest assured, we'll need cookies on. Merry Christmas. Thank you for listening, and I'll answer any question you might have.
I definitely know Rod for a couple, few years now, and I know they are committed. I used to play a little bit. Don't have a lot of time, but you guys are definitely committed and always there, so I'm going to support you there.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Appreciate it, Rod.
Okay. Next.
I could be able to have an important view. Heath Crossman, tennis player. I'm not an enthusiast. I am an advocate. I bought my house here because of that court 10 years ago. We've been playing tennis in that court for 10 years. I have 65 people on my list that I call to play right now in Appalachia Cola, Animal City, and now even in Mexico Beach. Mexico Beach somehow managed to get their tennis and pickleball court up and running with new nets around it, new windstalks and Brooks Knights, tennis, pickleball. We haven't been there for the last 13 months because tennis players can't play with a net this tall. I've got an 80 mile. I've got an 80 mile an hour overhead that'll make you cry. You can't keep that inside a court with a little four-foot net. We need a court. We have nets, we have the fence up and down, so we can play. There's a lot of us out there, and a lot of us right now are traveling all over the county just to find someplace to play. I had spoke in March of 2018 with Jim Anderson and Jim Norton at those courts at the high school, who specifically said, Jim Norton said, "You will never get a dime from the county schools for these courts because they are not part of our curriculum." I have a quote here for $14,900 from Surface Specialties, I gave, I gave Mike the name. $14,900 will make those courts first team. Mike, Norton said no. Jim Anderson said, "I've got no money," which is no expected. He said, "I might give you $7,000." The 12 people that were there also, I got $4,000 from them, but not enough. I went to the TDC, they said it's school property, we couldn't do a thing for you. I've been to USTA, they said, "You don't have a junior's program in place, so we can't help you there either." So I've come full circle back to you again. But I don't know if I want to put that in discussion. We love Pate Court. They love Pate Court. It's just an awesome place to be. I have no problem sharing the court right now. I would love to see a tennis court there and a pickleball court. We've coexisted for a few years. We can, we can get along for a few more. If you want to do another pickleball court and a tennis court, we're fine with that. Just give us someplace to play and pay in court if you can. It's, it's not rocket science. It's, it's already been done for a long time. Mexico Beach has proven that we can coexist. I've played there many times, other pickleball players playing right next to us, so don't take it away from them.
They have separate courts.
They have, they have, they have...
Pickleball and tennis separate?
Well, they have, in the tennis court, they have four pickleball courts lined up just like ours.
Okay.
All right. And also, right adjacent to that, in the basketball court, they have three other courts. So, like I said, we've played together before, and that kind of goes to what I want to say too, is that in that little 10-mile radius or 8-mile radius, there are 17 pickleball courts right now. I understand what he says about having a group together. It's a very social... I've played pickleball. It's a nice sport, but I like tennis. I have a whole list of people who love tennis, and we, we play it three times a week in Appalachia Cola. There's a large group of us that do that. We just want a court.
So if we resurface the ones at the, at the school, would that help?
That would not hurt a bit.
And lighting? Everybody can have the view.
I understand that. I understand that. I, I, we want a place to play, and the lights there would be, right now, a lot of our people do work, so they have to play in the evening. As a matter of fact, I've played Sunday in Pate Court. So the lights on, they're nice.
I spoke to Superintendent Norton today, and he's willing to work with us. I'm not sure he can come up with any money, but, but he would, it's a possibility he could lease them to us for a dollar a year for 100 years or something like that.
That was the problem here with the TDC, they said, since it's a school property, they couldn't help us.
Right, so, so he's aware that we want to do some kind of co-op thing. I don't think he can do anything monetarily based on his budget and so forth, but we might can, okay? So that's, that's an option.
Well, I just wanted you to let me know that, I know that there's a large group of pickleball people. I've seen them, I've had to deal with them, we've had discussions before. And that's okay, but like I said, we've coexisted for a long time, there's no reason not to do it now until we figure out a final solution that'll make everybody happy. Just don't forget us because there's only, there's only 60 of us, there's not 75, so...
We're not going to forget anybody, but the point is, if we're going to resurface something, I, I personally don't, and I'm a tennis player, have been for years, I, I don't see, it's not going to be good to put pickleball lines and tennis lines when you resurface and re-lining it, it's just...
I agree.
So, so we got, we really need to decide, we're going to do this here and this over here.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you had the option of using the Frank Pate Court for both tennis and pickleball versus having a new court that's only tennis at the, at the soccer field, which one is better?
I know, that's, that's, I would love a new court. And those are, the ones out there at the high school, the foundation is amazing, even after all these years of ignorance, they know we stretched them. The courts, the nets that are there now, I put up from my old tennis court in Atlanta. I'm the one that tightened them up. I buy the center straps for them. I maintain them because nobody else will. The, the structure for that court is amazing. I don't know what they did, but there's no cracks, there's no dips.
There's new resurfaces.
Yeah. When I sent the pictures off to Sports Surfaces, they're like, "How old are they?" I'm like, I think they're like 15 years old, I believe, and they're, and they're in amazing shape. Wouldn't take a whole lot to make them...
Can you turn that into, Mike, if you would, your estimate there if you would mind?
Just give us a place to play.
Well, and that's what, you know, from the very beginning, what we have all agreed to is, the best scenario, the best situation, and the best outcome would be for the tennis people to have a place and be happy to play and the pickleball. Myself, I've played tennis and pickleball. And when I first went and played pickleball, I thought, "Oh, if I was here to play tennis, I would not be happy." I'd be confused with all the lines. And I, I really enjoyed playing the pickleball, but I looked at it as a tennis player, and that's why I think that question really has to be answered. Would you rather share the court or have your own court at the soccer field?
If the option's sharing or getting a new court for ourselves, oh, yeah, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I would love to have a brand-new court that has just tennis lines on it, and so would everybody. If you get some lights out there, light...
Right, with lights.
Light, light would be good.
Okay. I think we can make that happen.
So, I'll give this to Mike. Like I said, just hope for goodness, because we're out there. It may be quiet, but we're out there, so, all right?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for staff. Let me take a picture of it and I'll get back to you. I'm cold.
Mike, has Firdapp applied for any grants yet this cycle?
We, we have submitted two grant requests for Firdapp, but we've missed, I mean, the cycle's closed for this period. It would be next October.
None this year?
Yes.
Anyone else? Got a hand, whoever wants to get up first, come on up. Please sign in, state your name.
My name is Linda Vance, and I'm a repentant pickleball player. I don't want to get into the mailing list debate, whose mailing list is larger than who else's mailing list. We have 71, they have 65, but I do want to address the question of frequency of use. I recognize that the last 13 months has been somewhat anomalous because of the post-hurricane situation, but even prior to the hurricane, we played, the pickleball players played three times a week minimum for at least two hours a time. At any given day, there are at least 12 of us playing. Even my rudimentary math skills tell me that that's 72-person hours per week playing pickleball. The current conditions don't really work. The sharing doesn't work for all the reasons that you've been discussing. It's hard to play pickleball when there's tennis lines, it's hard to play tennis when there's pickleball lines. We need a dedicated pickleball court now. The other issue is that we don't have a lot of alternatives. Certainly, there are courts in, in Mexico Beach. We can drive to Mexico Beach, but those of us who live in Port St. Joe, which are most of us sitting in the room, walk or bike to the pickleball courts in Pate Park. I think our commitment is unchallenged, as Rod pointed out. We were out there, only pickleballers, I would note, right after the hurricane with our shuttles and our blowers, and we were making it happen. So, you know, you can look at us all in the back of the room, we don't have five or eight years to wait for a dedicated court. We'll be looking at it. We're kind of in a hurry about it, basically. So, well, this is what I want to urge you to take into account. You know, when you consider this decision, I'd like to see you be using some rubrics about how much use there is, how much commitment there is, and how many options there are. There are tennis courts at the school, there are tennis courts in Highlandview, apparently there are wonderful tennis courts in Appalachia Cola from what we're hearing tonight, but we as pickleball players really need a dedicated facility at Pate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's have one more and then close it out. Come on up.
To reiterate, I'm a pickleball player.
Name?
Gene B. Hage.
Thank you.
I'm a pickleball player and probably the elder in the group. As you probably know, it's the fastest-growing sport in America. Unfortunately, tennis is declining. That doesn't mean we shouldn't have equal opportunity for both, but to put pickleball courts on a tennis court is like lining a runway in Atlanta. I mean, it's lines all over the place. It's just, it doesn't work. So, my suggestion is, what you were talking about, is do the high school for tennis and do the pickleball courts, resurface the tennis court for pickleball, because that is the practical and it's also the most economical way to satisfy both our needs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Gene. Okay, guys, we've, we've heard quite a bit. Anybody else want to make a comment?
I'm starting to make a decision before this turns into a...
Well, we can, we can, if you guys want to do that tonight, fine, or I was going to say, next meeting, we're going, going to make a decision.
Well, I think we should wait and hear from the school board and for the funding of the, of the trail lighting, because if the, if the funding of the, of the trail is approved, where we can move some money over, light the court, we can work with, with the school board to work out a fair deal. I mean, we have the money to, to resurface the court. We have the money to do whatever we want to do at the court that's currently at Frank Pate Park. The, the only other idea is, I would ask is, I think in the back of the room is probably the best pickleball player and one of the best tennis players that is in Port St. Joe, and Robert, I'm not sure which group he's sitting with tonight, because he plays both, but if you have anything to say, Robert, to add, I, I think you would be an expert in the area of both tennis and pickleball.
Give me the sign. Please, we, we know you, but you're rather a regular, please, sir.
My name is Robert Thomas, and it's going to take me about five minutes, seven minutes to say what I'm going to say up here. I was out there playing pickleball the other day, and you guys came out there and you said that you was going to... First thing y'all wanted to do was put a tennis court, and resurface it with tennis court lines, and put two pickleball courts at one end, two at the other end. That was finally, but the pickleball people want four altogether, close right together. And I'm like this, LV, young lady right this time, LV, me and her play tennis a lot. I play tennis and pickleball. And I'm really just here to help her get a tennis court, to be honest with you. And the reason for that is, seven years ago, I'm going to say seven years ago, when he was mayor, he came to me, and we came, me and Rod both went to him and asked about the pickleball courts, dedicated courts and everything. And he came to me and said, "Robert..." Most of these people right here, they wasn't here at the time, either Luke comes here, but six, seven years ago, he asked me, he said, "Robert, we got the money and the city budget to build a pickleball court, dedicated courts." And he confirmed this number. So he told me, he said, "Robert, all I want you to do is get Mexico Beach and Port St. Joe to come together, and we'll build a course for you." But the course is going to be on the North Port St. Joe area. If y'all don't know, North Port St. Joe is a black neighborhood. And what we did, I went to Mexico Beach, I went to Port St. Joe, and I asked each one of them, I said, "Look, the mayor told me to come to you guys, and they just told me to tell y'all, they're going to build some dedicated pickleball courts for you. And all y'all got to do is, do is come together and play together." I did that. And like I said, I'm saying this because they took something away from me, and when I get to the end, if you understand what I'm talking about, they took something away from me. LV, if you don't give it a court, she's going to be in the same position I was in. She's going to lose the tennis court out here at Frank Pate Park. But she's going to be, she's going to lose, lose the tennis court at Frank Pate Park. So I did it with the mayor, asked them, I went to Mexico Beach, asked them how they felt about it, and when the Port St. Joe asked them how they felt about it. And I am the only, at the time, I was the only black, I was the only black player in this game of pickleball with 100 and, I'm going to say 175 white people. No, no bad intentions about that. But I went to them, and the whites from Mexico Beach and the whites from Port St. Joe, they would not come together. And I thought it was because they didn't like each other, to be honest with you. But this is what came out of their mind. Robert, I don't give a damn if they build a court in North Port St. Joe, I'm not going over there. That come out of all of them minds. They said, "He..." I asked him, he, he told me he had the money for this. They didn't want to go to the north side because of the black side of town. They got, they had dedicated court, Rex had the money for dedicated courts for me, I had dedicated courts. But they didn't want to go on the black, and I said, I asked them, I said, "Why don't y'all want to go over there?" I don't want to ride through them, oh, beat up houses y'all got over there. It's scary over there. And I'm, like I said, I'm the only black player with these people. And that was an insult to me. It really was. And it's still an insult to me, but I don't really care no more. Like I, like I tell Rod, I'm not going to, you know, I'm going to tell y'all, I'm telling you all this story, but they had the opportunity to get the course, but they didn't want the course on the black side of town. And that's the God-heaven truth. That's the way it is. They didn't want the course on the black side of town. They had the course. They had the money for it. And Rex, am I lying to you about, is that a true, Rex? He's, he's confirming this. They had the course. And I don't want LV to feel like I feel, so I'm, I'm here really for LV. I don't want her to lose her tennis court at Frank Pate Park. I'm going to, I'm going to be honest with you. That happened to me. I wanted, when they, when Rex told me he had the money for the course at North Port St. Joe, I was excited, because like I said, I was the only black player in the court. And I could have got more blacks on the north side of town involved in pickleball. But the whites said they don't want to come over there because of the dilated houses, the neighborhood looking bad. Well, go around and buy a courthouse and come in there, it won't look that bad. They still, they still, they still didn't want it. So, I'm not for the pickleball, well, I'm for LV. I don't want her to feel the way I feel, but I had come back and tell you that white people told me, I'm not leaving Mexico Beach, I'm not leaving Beacon Hill, I'm not leaving Appalachia College to go on the north side and play no pickleball. And that is the way it is. So now, it's your decision what you want to do. I'm not trying to call no gruffness or nothing, but I'm just telling you the truth. Rex, you know the truth. You know what I'm saying to you? So now, what y'all do when I get down and go back and get my little seat, that's on your bill.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Robert, this white guy from Mexico Beach will come over here and... Are we ready to move on, guys?
You've got to have it, Jim.
Okay, we're going to have one more. We, we, okay, come on up, young lady, one more. Yeah, you got it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not a citizen of Port St. Joe. I do have a business and a building. My name is Cheryl Bradley, and I do not have an 80 mile an hour overhead, but I play tennis, and I've played tennis for many, many years at Frank Pate. I play with my 25-year-old daughter and my 75-year-old dad. And I ask that you, before we think, "Oh, we might can work out a deal with the school board," that we have some kind of definitive agreement before we do anything at Frank Pate, because this is the... Payton, because this is the only tennis court we have. And there's no question, there's a contingency of a lot of pickleball players, very nice people. But there are other options for pickleball, there's nothing. If you take this, this is the only tennis court. And so, if we could work out something, I just think that would be more helpful to have a plan than saying, "Well, we might work out something with the school, or we may or may not," and maybe not do anything right now until you have a better answer.
I'm kind of agree, I agree. We definitely do.
Because they're just, there's a lot of options, and I know you have limited money, but it just, the back and forth and the sharing the court and this, that and the other, I don't think that that's an option. But I do want you to see a face of just an average person. You haven't seen us playing tennis because there's not been a fence. You can play pickleball without a fence. If there wasn't a fence there, I would just be chasing tennis balls and bang, because I'm not LV, and I don't play like they do. So, that's, I don't think you've seen the presence there, but in recent years, you've resurfaced the courts, you did a lot of work out there because there were people playing tennis, even for pickleballers, and these people who live are just disappeared. So, please, just have a plan before you just do something.
Good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, thank you. You guys agree with that, you agree with that?
I agree, we wait till we have both sides of the plan.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to the school board before the next meeting.
And find out if we can get the funding to move over with the lights.
Funding with that.
If we can't get the funding, I still support putting up lights.
Yeah, I do too. So, anyway, let's do that, and I'll try to have a definitive something from the school board. Chester, I'm gonna, okay, come on up. Well, I saw you, we're just trying to move on from this subject and try to get it, because you gotta get to a ending point somewhere.
Chester, you playing pickleball or tennis?
Play football and basketball. My name's Chester Davis, I'm a pastor of Port St. Joe at Philadelphia Baptist Church, also president of the North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition. For months, with the ball field conversation on 10th Street, I've advocated to the city that one of the problems that Robert just mentioned is that we do not highlight what's available in other areas of the town. And I think because we do not highlight those areas, you have people come with an attitude that that area might be lighted enough that we can't come in. But yet, that area is filtered daily with people from all parts of the state and this community. But I'm saying, I think it's the city's responsibility to make use of all parks and areas that's available in the city, including what's on North Port St. Joe, whether they like it or not. It's time for us to forget about those color, racial barriers and all those good things. But if we have a site out there that can be used, we need to use it. And that's a beautiful site out there that can be used for a lot of other sports activity. You have lights out there? We even have one facility that has a complete cover, the length of an entire basketball court and more. But I'm saying, all those things are not being used, you know, for city facilities. Matter of fact, it's overlooked. And one of the things is overlooked because we don't highlight it enough. Somewhere down the line, we need to come to the table and say, "It's out there, let's use it. It's city property, let's use it."
Chester, last meeting, I think you didn't make that meeting, that meeting, we're working on the covered facility, putting new lights and washing a gym, and there was something else that we were doing at Peters Park too. So, they're not being overlooked at present time.
Well, I'm just saying for the highlighted areas. This is, this is a place that people can actually come and actually make the area big and brighter by bringing in some spotlights on what can be used out there, especially the tennis courts, you got a covered facility that can be used for other sports events, including baseball and other events.
Pastor Davis, I will say, at the last meeting, are you listening? I will say, at the last meeting, I did bring up the option of having the courts out there, and it was kind of brought up in the public, that maybe that's not what, what needs to be there. Maybe it doesn't need to be a tennis court. So, we did discuss having our Recreation and Parks and Rep Committee, part of the FERNAF Committee, talk about what is the highest and best use. Maybe the best thing to do is to tear that up, put something else there. But it was discussed, and there is some insurance money that we talked about. At the time, they didn't feel that, you know, pickleball or tennis was maybe the sport that was needing, needing to be represented there.
We have, we have the land, we have the space, and there's plenty of parking.
Yeah, absolutely.
And for water. Okay, guys, let's put this on the agenda for the next meeting and hope we can come to a resolution one way or the other. And we'll move on to the next item under Public Works.
Can we get Jason Tenell to give us an update, Mayor?
Yeah, we're gonna, these folks are easing out, and then Jason, we'll let you come up. Thank you all for coming, by the way. We appreciate everybody coming. Jason Tenell with BCC, give us an update on how things are going with them and entertain any questions or comments. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. ... I mean, everything's, the transition has gone extremely smooth. We're still dealing with a few issues at the transfer station that we're working through, but it's not affected the city transition at all. I know there were some questions about the bear-proof containers and how they're serviced, and the latching and the costs and all that. The eight dollars a month is not for the contraption that's being put on the containers. The eight dollars a month is for the service, so two dollars a week for the driver to get out, unlatch the thing and dump it. So, it's not necessarily for the contraption. And some folks have asked if they can install them. We really want them to install them, because then we don't have, we can't keep track of who's got them and who doesn't. It's in our system of who's getting charged the eight bucks and who's not, so... Other than that, I mean, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but all in all, I think, all the feedback we're getting is that it was an extremely smooth transition.
What's the timeframe on the transfer station, the operational?
I feel like it's gonna be the end of January, the beginning of February. But, yeah.
You can't keep moving it every month, every time you move it.
It's gonna be ninety days, and then it's, we're just, we're adapting the best we can. And we're dealing with the woodchips on fire right now, which has created a whole nother set of issues we're having, because of smokes blowing in the scale house. So, if folks are going out there, that's another thing that we want to make sure the public knows, if they're going to the transfer station and they show up and it's shut down because the direction of the wind and the humidity and all the stuff we're dealing with right now is lighting those woodchips on fire and it's shutting the scale house down. So, we're working all, the whole day today, we're trying to work on a solution to keep it open even if the smoke's there, so... To answer your question, we don't really know, but we're shooting for February.
How about the yard debris pickup? Where we at on that?
That's, that's been happening, and it's been, the first week of the month is when we started doing it. The entire route is done the first week for the city.
So, it's a one, once a month?
Once a month.
Because I received several calls that the trucks were picking up a portion of what was there. And I think, maybe we're a little spoiled, because when the city did it, the city had a person on the ground with a rake, and then they had the, you know, the guy with the bucket picking up the stuff, and they didn't leave the yard until it was properly picked up. And I think your truck operation is more of grab it and go kind of thing. So, I would ask that you would speak to your drivers about just doing a little bit better job. I know they're not gonna be able to do as good a job as we did with the city, because they don't have that second man on the ground with a rake. But I think they could do a little bit better job than they've done in the past.
Yes, sir. So, I haven't heard that. Now, I heard that, again, we hear it consistently, that if it's not in the can, it's not getting picked up. So, I've heard that, but I haven't heard the...
Yeah, this was just like the tree trimmings.
Yes, sir.
I actually went and followed the truck down Garrison one day. And I'm not saying they did a terrible job, but they didn't do a really good job either. So, I think they could, they could improve on their service.
Jason, I had a guy ask me today about, he rakes up the leaves, oat leaves and the roots in the bag, so the leaves won't scatter everywhere after he rakes them up. And so, if he puts the bag out, I mean, they don't know if it's, I guess, household garbage or yard waste, but you got a solution to that? I mean, that you wanted to, I mean...
Yeah, another garbage can. I mean, that's probably the best solution.
And I basically told him, I said, "Well, put it in the bag, put it in the garbage can, it's the only thing I can do." So, that's what he's gonna do.
Because the plastic, the plastic can't go where the yard debris goes anyways, because the yard debris goes in one spot, and if it's in a plastic bag, it's gotta go in a different spot.
Uh, I got you. Okay. I think one thing I had is making sure we address the issue that it's got to be in the can. I mean, the boxes, you know, it's Christmas coming, and the boxes have to be broken down and got to be in the can. In the can. I think I get a little bit of that though. So, I just like to stress that every time, because I do get called when that... Right. All right. Any questions, guys? Thank you for coming, Jason. Move on to Public Works. Jim, traffic lights, is that John?
I'll do it.
Who's gonna do it?
Either, I'll do it, Mr. Mayor, it's fine. A couple of weeks ago, we brought our traffic signal contractor in, as we started experiencing some issues with the traffic signal at Marina Drive or First Street. And we heard back from them and received a quote today, late today, I believe it should be a handout.
Yeah, we had it.
So, that, you know, essentially, the controller was, you know, went underwater, there appears to be a lot of corrosion in there, which is affecting the timing loops. You know, nothing, nothing really works at First Street except default. So, you know, you're getting a signal for a left turn if you're southbound, whether someone's there or not, so it needs to be replaced is the bottom line, along with pedestrian lights at First and at Fifth Street. So, they provided us with a cost. We have reached out, and I spoke with John Howell at Farival, and also, we have an email into Dallas Boyd with FDOT. We should be in contact with him tomorrow, and the idea is to, if not get a portion of that potentially paid for by FDOT, all of it paid for by FDOT. So, I think we have some room there. So, what you have tonight is just for informational purposes, let us continue to work with FDOT to see if we can't get them to help us and get that package repaired. The unfortunate thing is, it's gonna take a while, either way, to get that box built, unless FDOT has one laying around, which I doubt. So, we'll work, after we get that decision from them, we'll work, you know, back with Griffin to see if there's something in there and we can do to clean that, you know, loop system up, but I'll have to come back to the board on that one.
So, you plan to hear back from him this week?
Well, I haven't talked with Mr. Boyd from FDOT yet, and I have with John. So, that conversation will take place tomorrow. So, I should, by the end of the week, hopefully have a better idea.
Twenty-five thousand, I don't know.
A lot of money.
Come up with that. Might be some insurance money laying around, but rather use it for something else.
Our hope is, we can get FDOT to do that for us. That's our plan.
Is there any concern that the lights would just go down?
They're not gonna go down, they're just not gonna function properly. When I say properly, on the time loop, as it was. You know, traffic is flowing down ninety-eight, and there's nothing on, you know, First and Marina, it's gonna continue to flow down ninety-eight and vice versa. So, those timing loops do not work and will not work. So, you know, it's just, it's gonna keep counting down those seconds without skipping, so...
All right. Anything else Public Works? Any other good news?
No, sir, that's all I had, unless there's any questions for me.
Nope?
Nope.
Okay, goodness. Move on to some of the water.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. On page seven, we'd like to have the old city electrician's Ford van declare a city surplus. I feel like that it's, I've got some safety concerns about this vehicle, and we'd like to go ahead and, it's like fifteen years old, have it declare a surplus.
Okay. Motion to declare it surplus. All right, motion, Mr. Hoffman?
Second.
Second. The mileage didn't look too bad until you told me it's fifteen years old or something.
Yeah, well, the city, you know...
That's all, yeah, I agree. Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye? All the same, sign, motion passed, four, oh. All righty.
And Mayor, only other thing I have, we have a new operator at the water plant, Scott Nissenmeyer, has passed his state Class C state license exam for us.
Very good.
And worked real hard for it, so, you know it.
Everybody have one now?
All but one. We got one more left.
Okay, good.
Yes, that's all I have there.
Kevin, what's water?
Two things. The first one, let's, if you don't mind, we'll talk about filters. You know, we had ordered filters last year, kind of topped off my budget, we had $68,000 worth of filters. That got us six hundred and eighteen. I'm two hundred and eighty-eight filters short of finishing that. We're blowing through filters now, we're just putting pressure on the old filters and they're blowing through, so shut down for a month. So, the finish up that project, to get all the filters done, is thirty-seven thousand twenty-five dollars. I had budgeted thirty thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, you know, for filters. It's a little more than that. It's six thousand five hundred dollars more than what I budgeted. So, what I would like to do is start one of my other projects, and just cut it short and postpone it for a year, go ahead and finish up the filters, so that's not an issue we're dealing with. Stay within my budget, I'd like to order the rest of the filters and get them all done, and that way we can let that happen and keep going.
So, Mike?
Yeah, he does have...
Did you find the money?
He does have twenty thousand, and will abandon it, that he can postpone and use those capital items, six thousand five hundred of that twenty thousand towards completing that project. So, that money is available to him, and he certainly can adjust the use of those capital items.
Okay. What's the pressure of the board?
He knows more about tree sewage than I do. I'll take his word for it.
I'm with you there, Commissioner. I would need a motion, anything? To allow staff?
Yeah, and move some money around, go budget.
Yeah.
You make the motion.
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
Second, and discussion of...
Yes, sir, Mayor, just for clarification, that's gonna be, this actually falls under sole source, if I'm not mistaken. So, that way we follow our procurement policy on there, so we make sure we have that for the record.
Okay.
I'll add that to my motion.
Okay. For the discussion? All in favor, aye? All the same, sign. Good deal, you go on.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll be replacing the filters. The second thing is, we made an offer for an electrician. The gentleman's highly qualified, extremely qualified, you might say. So, there's been offer extended, he's asked for a week of vacation start. So, that's kind of what we would like to offer. We didn't offer him the very top of the pay scale. It'd be a chief electrician for the city, not for me, but for the city. But for him to get anything like vacation, it has to be approved to the board.
The personnel policy does allow for this provision to be done, if we wanted to give somebody time upfront, but the caveat is, it says that it has to go through the department head, city manager, and then formal approval by the board. So, we think this is a good option for the city, get somebody a seasoned electrician to come onboard. I think it's a small ask for, to actually go ahead and give them a week's vacation and use during that first week, instead of having a whole week, a whole year before they can use it. So, recommendations to give this to this person as an offer and to start that position.
And I think, you know, as someone with a lot of HR background, as long as we can differentiate the reason why he's getting it, and we're not setting a precedent, you know, we're doing it because he's a well-seasoned electrician and we're not paying him at the top of the scale, I don't care about that.
And we're not deviating necessarily from personnel policy.
That's right, we're actually, we're actually following the policy, but I make sure it comes before you. Because normally, what would happen is, it outlined that you wouldn't get a week until you've been there for one full week. But since we are, come down on the pay scale, I think it'd be appropriate to bring people for you for approval.
Okay. Motion to accept recommendations, staff. Motion, second?
I'll say it.
Second. For discussion, all in favor, aye? All the same, sign, motion passed, four, oh.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Engineer? Mr. Engineer?
Uh-oh, I skipped Mike, but we'll go back.
I'm following your trail, I need to check on that. We got the, at the last meeting, voted to cut the lights in half, we sent it back to do, asked for a new proposal, so we're waiting to have it, so we'll also follow up with grant folks. Road bond, we're just waiting on Robert's and Robert's, nothing for y'all or me to do on that. And then the last one was just to follow up on the workshop we had earlier with the Nerda grant, and the two task orders that are on there for your consideration.
Okay.
We're talking about the task order pertaining to the workshop, can this happen?
For the engineering, for the process?
Yeah, for the, for the, right, for the stormwater master plan, for the quality.
Passed one and four, I think.
I'll make the motion to move forward.
Okay. Motion to move forward with the engineering.
I'll say it.
Second, okay. Discussion, anyone? Anymore? All in favor, aye? All the same sign, motion passed four, oh, ready to go.
Any other questions for me? Start date on Clifford Sims Park Road, you have any idea?
Oh, Jenny.
Jenny Park?
I don't, I mean, we're waiting on, we're waiting on, they told me, hopefully sometime this month, but I don't have an exact date. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mike?
I don't have anything specific. I did mention that we do have a meeting with FEMA on Thursday, and even though we've elected not to move forward with the bid on the pavilion, we certainly can follow through with the discussion about getting them to approve those projects that do fall over their calculated recovery amount. And other than that, we're moving forward with our audit prep to close out our last fiscal year. We typically get that information to audit before the end of the year, so we're trying to get that out. And then I'll move forward with getting some written quotes on the tennis courts at, at this high school.
Yeah, you might as well do that, and in the meantime, I'll see what kind of arrangement I can make with Superintendent Norton, with any kind of lease or any kind of help they can give us on that.
And based on the indication from the, from Mr. Grossman, that it's probably gonna be over the bid threshold, if he got a quote of 14,000 some time ago, we're probably gonna have to bid that one out.
Well, there are two courts there.
Yeah.
They can bid one court, then the other court. Can they do that?
Potentially, or you could work out some type of agreement with the school board, and then get you below that bid threshold.
Okay? All right, we'll work on that.
Okay, but that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Nope, nope. There we go, let's go, the closing force, when we get that quarterly, police chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight. Board has any questions for me?
I have one concerned citizen today, said that they're noticing what they appear to have drug activity at Peters Park on the, under the pavilions. He says it's a pretty regular occurrence at night, if you guys wanna police patrol a little bit more at the pavilion there.
You talking about the covered basketball court, or the actual...
On the way to it, we pull into the parking lot, right at the parking lot.
We did find you a nice fan tonight. So I guess, how many miles was it?
Seventy-six thousand miles. Seventy-six thousand miles. Put a cage in the back.
Not fifteen years old. All right. Anything for the chief, anything else? All right. Thank you, chief. All right, Ms. Charlotte?
Christmas parade's still growing, I hope you're getting your golf carts, vehicles, or whatever ready, but drawing, I appreciate the support.
Good deal, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, citizens to be heard. Come right up, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Dr. Matthews, 312 Avenue F, 4 St. Joe, Florida. And what I, I have a comment to make, more so than anything, about what Robert Thomas said. He said that the pickleball players, and see the people that I was supposed to be talking to, they're not... Well, he said the pickleball players and the tennis players was afraid to come to Northport St. Joe because they're blighted, and they're afraid and all that. But they're not afraid to come to pick up the food. They're not afraid to come when it's time, when they need a job, and the workforce that need to apply for a job. They're not afraid to come when it's time to pick up their vegetables and fruits on Monday. So, they can choose when their fear come out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Dr. Ryan. Okay, Mr. Branch, come up.
Robert Branch, I'll be real brief, if I listen to some of that conversation about Northside, and I, uh... I've been over numerous times, over the years, and I've never had a problem, I guess, because I grew up here, and I knew a lot of people. But, Mr. Chester, you are right, y'all, y'all do need to use y'all's available spaces. There's no denying that. At the same time, it looks like we're still hunting land on this side. And I want, what I wanna do is remind y'all that we still have this 60-acre field of grain. Uncle, this is a copy of the deed, Mr. Peter, my thanks, is it due? And that, actually, it says, on that deed, it can be used for recreational complex, non-problem. It doesn't say anything about a baseball field, pickleball, soccer, football, a recreational complex. That land can be used for the city of St. Joe, we've got the key to it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to step on either side, but y'all have collected, the city, through the TDC, have collected five or six years for that land, and without one thing, they're not back into it. It's high and dry, the highest place in St. Joe. We talked about water. There's no water, that's ready to use. But, uh, maybe, maybe the TDC, it was brought up. Mr. Ashbrook, you still on, you still on board?
I am, sir.
And I noticed y'all did, I missed the last meeting, I've been busy, kinda flipped through it, and y'all did bring up this TDC money, that's y'all's fair share. Mr. Hoffman, you made a good point. There's a, there's stipulation in this statute here, four, four and five, state. You've, you've got to have a plan, there's, we need to go over, we need to look at it, and we need to start going by it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
All right, Chester, come on out.
More than anything. Chester, uh, that president. This Saturday, at the Philadelphia Baptist Church Annex, we have a young lady named Tina Renee. She is a experienced financial administrator and a credit consultant. She came about a month ago to Zion Fat Church for the community, that the younger people and older ones that are having credit problems can come to this event, and she can teach us a little bit about how we can apply our credit. And the reason I'm making this announcement is because I'm asking the city if you know anyone, especially, and it's open to the public, that they can come. The young lady has a lot of expertise that we don't normally get, that for our younger people, even for our teenagers, you know, going into getting credit for the future, and how the parents can help them out, support them. So I'm gonna come to the city and want to put it out there, because we should have done it, because one of the churches had to swap out, so we didn't get the information out. So I'm asking the city to let us, you know, at least be aboard somewhere in the city. Because this information, you don't get, you know, free. And it's a young lady, she's coming, she don't charge anything, but she's gonna be able to help us out with understanding some of our credit, how to buy a house, bad credit or good credit. She also does a, about a three-hour, three to four-hour, about three to four-hour?
Yes.
Yeah, event. So anyway, we're opening this up to the public, everybody can come. She is a financial advisor, consultant, and she knows what she's talking about. So I'm saying to the city, if you know anybody that's interested in buying a house, trying to get some credit established, come to this event, it's open to the public. And it's at the Philadelphia Baptist Church, starting 9:00 a.m. Saturday morning, on the 7th.
Great event.
It's very open to all.
Very good. Thank you, Chester, very good. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. It's sort of back to the tennis thing, because I can understand how they feel. You know, tennis is pretty sacred, sort of like golf, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, you know, the TDC and everybody has the country club, which has tennis courts out there. So I'm kinda curious, are there any discussions through the members that are still out there about maybe trying to increase traffic with tennis players?
I'm not aware of it, but I wouldn't be surprised if it happened. I mean, it's a good facility, it needs resurfacing also, but I can, I can see that happening down the road somewhere. Not anytime soon, but I can see it happening.
Well, you know, resurfacing tennis courts is a lot cheaper than redoing all the grounds. And you just heard 61 people play tennis. You've got a clubhouse, you've got a restaurant, you've got places for ladies and gentlemen to change, and et cetera. I just think it's a, it's sort of a no-brainer, if it only costs, you know, $14,000 to resurface courts.
We'll ask our TDC representative, right now, you've got it now.
Yeah, and I want to, wanna, I'm glad to see Tom back over here and have that kind of stability. And of course, I have put in the record before about the ABCs of corruption. And I just, because this, all this corruption that's going on in the Panhandle, it's not gonna go away. And I've talked to a couple of y'all about that. And so it has touched this county, and I'm just gonna go ahead and enter this article that was in the Panama City News Herald in our record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, Commissioner Ashbrook, you're first.
Actually, I have a few things today. We talked about several times, about picking up trash all around town, maybe possibly having one final trash pickup after the storm. Where have we gone with that, Mayor? Have we looked into what it would cost to do another debris pickup around town?
I don't think we have. I know Commissioner Langston's been working hard on a plan, but as far as getting Ashbread or somebody like that back for a week, I don't know, I'm pretty sure we haven't discussed it, don't know what it would cost.
At a 10,000-foot level, basically what we've done is, we've really worked everything through code enforcement. I think John has picked up, I think, 60 or so in the last two weeks. But we did just kinda look at conceptually what you were looking at, what's on the ground, what the cost is. Now, if you go in and advertise, you probably will have three times as much as what you have on the ground. But looking on the ground, I think that number came back, just conceptually looking at at least $50,000 is what kind of...
Ooh, north of that, yeah. It's a moving target, so it's hard to quantify.
Exactly, and it's hard to substantiate exactly what that number is until that day they get it all back to the scale and weigh it, which you won't have to pay.
Well, I'm assuming they're gonna charge us by the load, but one of the things I was gonna recommend, why don't we reach out to someone like Kim Hunter, that's got eight or nine of those pickup arm trucks, that can do it here locally? Maybe we could get a better deal or price doing it like that. They have the trucks already with the arms on.
Not a bad idea.
There was an issue, I actually spent the day, well, part of my day, driving around MLK and up and down the avenues, and there are two trailers sitting right there at MLK and Avenue F, there's no license plate on them, but they're parked right on the sidewalk. And I saw, yeah, I saw a couple of kids riding their bike, that jutted out onto the street right in front of me, which is how I noticed them.
They're under a coat. They're already ridden up.
Which brings me over to my next point. If we do it, just one more time trash pickup, I think we as a board maybe need to allocate some money into a code enforcement budget that allows us, once we determine there's a violation, if we can't pin it to somebody, that doesn't mean we should ignore it, we should have to pick that up. I don't know how to go about it, but I think if we can even start with just putting 10 grand in the budget in a future year to say, if somebody put it on a vacant piece of land and we can't pin down who did it, we can't just let it sit there. We've gotta do something about it.
We are picking those up as we speak, yes.
I've got a bunch of addresses for you then.
Mr. Burke, it does try to associate it with a homeowner or violator, but if he can't, yes, sir. It goes in a hopper to be picked up, we have to pick those up.
Commissioner, we had 26 to pick up this week through code enforcement, and three of those were unidentified.
That's a ride.
Well, I'm just saying, that comes to our foot.
Pretty good average for us, you know.
All but three.
That's really good.
Also, another one along the lines of Peters Park, lack of trash cans. There's a lot of garbage just right there by the parking lot, they're asking if they can have a trash can right there in the parking lot. I thought, why not? If we have some, if we can get a trash can out there, hopefully, instead of throwing your trash out the window on the floor, they'll put it in a garbage can. Uh, let's see, and I did wanna thank Chester, he's still here, that credit counseling, it's one of the parts that a lot of times I think we forget, we can build all the affordable housing and affordable homes, but if the bank won't give you the money, it's not affordable. And so, thank you for offering those programs, it's very beneficial to the citizens. And that is all I have.
Okay.
Only thing I had was employee Christmas party slash dinner. As, I know I spoke to you, Jim, a date and time and all that, everybody good? Would do one for the employee?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, I've had a conversation with a few of you over the last couple of days, and we're just trying to put something together. So I think what we need to do is, we need to try to figure out the day we wanna try to do it, and what we wanna try to do. See, I think we can definitely do it. I know we looked at days potentially, talking to...
Decent to the 20th.
Talking to Commissioner Hoffman the other day, we were talking, I think I mentioned to you too, we were thinking maybe the 20th may be a decent day, that's a Friday. Because if you move into the Christmas week, a lot of people are already taking plans to take off. So maybe you could do a later lunch, and that way you could actually shut down to have time for all the employees to come together with the city commission to have a lunch, but that's a...
Yeah, I'd like that, I'd do the later lunch, kinda like we did last year.
Yeah, and just for the record, it will not be a Christmas party. It's actually considered a employee appreciation day, in that way we can stay out of problems, right? Right, Tom? Yeah, that's the only thing that I was actually gonna speak about as well. I would like to furnish the employees. Last year, we had a business, or actually, I think it was the former attorney purchased the turkeys. And this year, we're gonna do hams, because enough people told me they didn't wanna know the turkey. So I'm good with a ham, and I guess, Tom, you'll be buying the hams this year, since you're in that seat. That's all I have.
Okay, all right. All right, I've got a couple of things. First thing, about a month ago, had a meeting with Warren Jaeger with the 800 consortium about our half million dollars that we have allocated for this year, to hopefully move that over to help complete the sewer project in Northport St. Joe. Last Tuesday, the county commission meeting, they both filed out not to do that. Got a letter here from Sandy Quinn, wants to have a workshop. So I don't know what they wanna workshop on, but I guess we could have one if they want to. So, so, the point being made is, I'm disappointed. It's been a very good Christmas present for the city to have something that would benefit, be very beneficial to us at the present time. I know the Eastside Sewer System's been on our, on our plate for several years. We've indicated more than once that at the right time and the right price, we might be interested in it. But, but at the present time, as one vote, I'm still not interested in that system any way. I don't, you know, it's just disappointing to me that we had the project that we wanted, and it got turned down. All the other... All the other projects under the P.O.T. three money were never voted on by this commission, it was our money, and that we were told we were gonna spend it on these projects. And so, I'm disappointed, I'd still like to have a workshop, they'd like to talk about helping us reallocate that money to help Northport St. Joe complete their sewer system. I'd be more than willing to entertain that workshop, so if you guys would like to consider a workshop, you know, I'd like to set it up, and set it up here at the city meeting chambers, and let's talk about it, they wanna cooperate with us, and let's hope that we can, that can work.
I think the workshop is a good idea, I took the time to watch the County Commission meeting, the few minutes where they voted on it. And the information that was presented to the county commissioners was not accurate, and I think that at the workshop, and I reached out to one of the county commissioners myself, and explained to them that the information, in my opinion, was far from accurate, the deal on taking or not taking the plant at Golf Fair was presented in a different light. So, I think the workshop would give us an opportunity to give facts to the county commissioners, and maybe they reconsider that vote that they took.
Yeah, I agree as well, we need, that we need to, definitely need that workshop, had a conversation with Mr. Jaeger today, and he said, let's move forward and talk about it, and so, if, if, if everybody's willing to do it.
We gotta look at dates, December is extremely crowded, but they're limited down to spend, excuse me, spend that money too, it's gotta be spent by June or July of 2020, is that right?
Yes, sir, I think we're staring down, we need to go out and bid, but regardless of money, if you could get approval for it, I think it would go a long ways towards helping out at Northport St. Joe, whether you went out to bid separately, or you did it independently on there, first you gotta get approval to be able to use that money to-
Right, right. So, do you guys wanna shoot, shoot for a time in December, it might be difficult with everything going on, but I'm fine with it, and whatever time of day you guys wanna meet, we'll reach out to the county and ask if they can, let's see, available dates to schedule a workshop, is what their request.
What about the eighteenth, prior to the next meeting?
You mean seventeen? Seventeen.
Oh, wait, yeah, I'm looking at a 2018 calendar, so, hold on, let me get on the right year.
We had a meeting on the seventeenth.
You had a meeting on the-
No, that's-
We did twelve o'clock meeting. Well, you wanna do prior or after the twelve o'clock meeting? I don't know.
We do it prior? Prior to, or what are you thinking of?
It'd be fine.
On the seventeenth, I may not be back, you're in Dallas, is that right?
All right. What about, what about the tenth? Or the, possibly the nineteenth then?
Nineteenth is bad.
Tuesday, the tenth, nineteenth what?
Nineteenth is good.
Good, nineteenth?
My only thinking was on the seventeenth, just in case we needed to vote on something.
Oh, well, I mean, if we, well, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I follow you, we could, we could roll it over in January meeting.
Yeah, on the first.
Or move the seventeenth meeting to six o'clock, and have the workshop at five o'clock.
We've noticed some dates.
Unfortunately, we've already noticed we have two planning issues here.
Throw out some dates, guys.
Let's go be January.
You really can't make the early, an hour-
I can't make the meeting that day. I don't know when I'll be back. The nineteenth was good.
Nineteenth at noon?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, if you'll contact the Chairman Quinn, and see if the nineteenth at noon would be, work for them, that'd be great.
No, thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing I had was our prior attorney, Paul Britton, did a good job for us, I wanna say that, I'd like to also say his latter of resignation was very professional and very complimentary of the staff that we have here and the commission, so I appreciate him doing that, and I wish him well, and I don't have anything else, just end of journey. Thank you.